Meeting of the Caledonia Township Board of Trustees. This is our meeting of Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Item one is roll call, and I will call the roll. Mr. Snoyk.
Here.
Mr. Hermanette is absent. Mr. Bradshaw.
Here.
Harrison is here. Ms. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Zoller.
Here.
And Mr. Robertson.
Here.
Item two is pledge of allegiance and invocation. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We give our thanks this evening for the honor and duty of being here. We ask that you got our work, help us to work well together, be respectful of each other's thoughts and those who are before us. Help us represent those who sent us here well in the best interests of our friends and neighbors and our community. We ask that you be with those who protect us while we're here in the police and fire and the military. Give them your protection and give comfort to their families. We ask this all in your name. Amen. Item six, consideration of the meeting agenda. Board members have reviewed tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, clarifications?
Move that we approve the agenda?
Support.
Move by Snoyk, support by Zoller, that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nope. Enforce public comment. This is an opportunity to address the board of any items of interest. There is a public comment period before or during each listed agenda item as well and an extended period at the end of this evening. Does anyone have any general public comment at this time? Yes, sir. If you could come forward, identify yourself and where you reside, and you have two minutes.
Chris Thomas, ninety-eight ten Creekview Lane. Thanks for putting the signs up on the trail. It just took you from July to September to do it, but you know, I guess it wasn't a very big concern for you guys, but you guys got it up. And so I just want to know when it's going to be cleaned up. Still not cleaned up. This grass is still there. The rubbish is still there of the yard waste. So people put pesticides on that into the wetlands. And then I know you did the expansion of the canal, whatever, the stream there, and that looks great, but then your trucks was running right over the grass, putting it right into the dirt. So just unconcerned about what, you know, what could have been done. You could have had that cleaned up a month ago, two months ago. I came back in July twenty-first, came to the office. Oh, yeah, we'll work, look into that. Nothing happened, of course. So I came in August, spoke. Oh, yeah, we'll put signs up. We'll do all that. Had to come back in September. You finally got signs up. And you're just waiting, twiddling your thumbs and getting things done. So you need to have someone go clean that up. You have plenty of people that we pay taxes to, to work for you. And so it should be cleaned up because you don't want to go and look for the person that did it. I know maybe they're who's who in the community. I don't know. Maybe they're the, you know, pretty people in town, so you can't get, you don't want to get on them and all that. So I don't know what your reasoning is, but it's right there. Needs to be taken care of, and I'd appreciate if it was taken care of.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Close public comment. Item five, inquiry of conflict of interest. Does anyone have an interest in any tonight's items that would prevent them from discussing or voting upon those items? See none. Item six is approval of the consent agenda. Board members have reviewed tonight's consent agenda. Does anyone have any question, comments, or is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sir, support?
Support.
Move by Snoyk, support by Zoller to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nope. And it is approved. Item seven, we'll report and file that we have received the committee officer, I'm sorry, reports from boards and department heads, and those are in your packet for your review. Allows us to move to new business. Item ten A is a resolution regarding, item ten A is a resolution regarding your request.
We weren't provided building or zoning.
Okay. Let the record show that the agenda says to be provided, and they were not provided. So we'll strike those items from the minutes. On item seven, A two and A ten, we'll strike those items from the record as reports received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten A is a resolution regarding request for amendment of the planned mineral removal permit. That lands at sixty-four ninety-sixty-eight Street Cherry Valley Development LLC. We do have materials in our packet, a memorandum from the planner and also from legal counsel. I believe the applicant is here. I think the order of business will have the applicant present, will then allow public comment, and then the board will consider the questions. So if the applicant can please come forward. If you could identify yourself and contact information too, please.
Good evening. My name is Don DeGru with Excel Engineering, representing Cherry Valley Resources. Kim Hermanette is here as well, representing the applicant. Back in February, we made a presentation to the planning commission for two items, and one of those items was for expanding. I'll bring up a copy of a plan here. Expanding the mining operation to include the south forty-nine acres or so. The area outlined. The area outlined right through this portion of the property. That area had historically been part of the mining operation, and the northerly portion of those fifty acres were mined many years ago. We are now, and there's some history on that parcel that I'm sure most of you are aware of and was outlined in Rizman Corhorn's report, where it was donated to the township and then the applicant purchased the property back. And we are now looking to mine the southerly portion of that forty-nine acres. It would include about fifteen acres of property. The presentation was made to the planning commission, and just a few items that I'd just like to point out. It was, the public comment was taken prior to the applicant having introduced the project. So I think there was a lot of things that were not clear to the public and that continued to be evident during the public comment. And so we are hoping to maybe resolve some of that information so that it can be clearly understood what the limits of a mining operation will entail. I'm going to bring up just a PowerPoint that I think has been provided. Bear with me here. So, application was submitted in January sixth of this year, and then February three, the planning commission considered that, had the public hearing and reviewed the documents. And as I stated, public comment was received before the applicant could make any presentation. And so if there was some, just information that wasn't clearly understood. And so we're hoping to resolve some of that by going through just what we're proposing and what we're requesting. So a quick project overview and request, and then maybe address some of the concerns that were brought up by the public and the planning commission. Talk a little bit about setback flexibility, which ordinance allows, and compare it to some neighboring communities as to setbacks from property lines and more specifically from adjacent homes. There's a little bit that we can go over with the township engineers, comments and preparation of documents, and then review specifically the details maybe of the mining plan and the proposed grades that we are suggesting as part of that. And then ultimately, a mining operation, what's certainly the activities that are related to mining is always a concern, and that's certainly understood. And the goal, of course, is what happens when the mining is complete. Two things. How do we control how the mining is operated so that there's minimal impact to adjacent properties? And then what's the final use that the property can use to be developed? And that's certainly something that needs to be considered because we don't want a mining operation that has no potential for ultimate development. So our request is twofold. Like I mentioned, we are asking for expanding the mining permit to include that southerly forty-nine acres. The property's already zoned PMR, so we're simply asking for our mining to be expanded into that area. And then the additional request is to get a reduction in the current five-hundred-foot setback to allow for mining to occur within a hundred and fifty feet of a dwelling. We'll maintain the minimum hundred-feet requirement from a property line, and we'll certainly look at compliance with all other regulations per your ordinance. As you know, there was some mining done within this forty-nine acres, very close to and adjacent to what the historical mining was done, but was, our current permit does not include that property. And so the applicant was asked to cease that mining within that area and has done that. And we are just going through the motions of approval at this point for that. Also, there was an area along Sixty-Eighth Street that was within five-hundred feet of a dwelling, and significant process, progress has been made in restoring that area. And I guess on behalf of the client, we're just saying this operation has gone on for a long time, and albeit there's been a few of these recent activities done outside of the permit allowed. Our effort and the applicant's effort is to stay committed to improving the process and take responsibility for everything that's done out there. The main factor that we see as far as the health, safety, and welfare obviously relates to how the mining operation takes place. And so noise management is monitored, and we can't exceed the decibel requirements. Basically, we've got backup beepers that are required by law. There's a front-end loader, a bulldozer, and trucks that are loaded. So, and those activities are limited to the hours of seven-thirty to five, Monday through Friday, and the permit actually allows seven to six. Child safety certainly is safety in general, but specifically child safety and natural barriers and protective fencing as outlined in the existing permit will continue to be used to make sure that measures are taken for safety. Traffic control, that was one of the items that was misunderstood. Someone was concerned about all the traffic going out to Cherry Valley Avenue. And of course, our intent is not to go out to Cherry Valley Avenue at all. I'll bring up the overall plan. The existing operation comes off of Sixty-Eighth Street. None of that is going to be different. They'll enter and exit at the entrance right across from Egan, at the north center of the site, and all operations will, as it relates to traffic in and out of the project, will go to the north. Again, monitoring commitment. We will continue to be responsive to any concerns that the township or the neighbors bring up and try to address them in a timely fashion. We're, again, on behalf of Cherry Valley, focused on maintaining a safe and respectful environment during the mining operations. Your restoration plans, we do intend to follow with maximum slopes of one vertical to three horizontal in compliance with the ordinance. And the site that's, that we have a permit to mine right now, all the restored areas are maintaining that one-on-three slopes, and the Denhartex have done a nice job of plantings. If you've ever been out there and looked at the areas that have been restored. We're committed to retain a minimum buffer of a hundred feet of the trees during the mining operations. That requirement isn't anything that the ordinance requires, but we just think it's important to have that additional buffer during the mining operations, and we'll commit to not removing any of those trees to provide for that additional buffer. And dust and air quality, done by water spraying of the haul roads and processing areas, and we'll continue to do that. Last year, a permit was obtained from Eagle for the expansion of the two lakes that are presently on the site. The main lake would be the West Lake, and let me just bring that plan up again. It's the lake right here. That's the active area. Majority of the Easterly Lake has been established already with home sites. There is a small area to the west that may or may not be mined, but that was included in the permit. And an area to the north of the East Lake. I'll go through some of the descriptions of the various areas of the existing mining operation and how they relate to quantity and the amount of material available, which speaks to why we need to go to the south to get some more product. And there's annual ground surveillance and testing. That was required way back, I think in the mid-nineties. They wanted to monitor that, and that continues to occur by a third party, I believe, and the township reviews that each year. And I just want to make it clear that there's no dewatering operations that occur as part of the late construction. And so the lowering, the temporary lowering of water table would not be an issue if anyone has wells in the adjacent area. That's something that they don't need to be concerned about. The community benefits. Supporting local and long-term value. Ongoing supply of sand supports local roads, schools, and housing project. As you know, the sand is where the good Lord put it, and we need that product in this area. And rather than hauling it from pits that are in farther distance and impacting more of the community and more of the roads, this is a key place, centrally located for much of the need for that type of material. As we know, mining activity will be temporary, making way for future land development similar to the existing developed property surrounding the mining area. And so it is an inconvenience, there's no question, but it is temporary, and the long-term goal, I think, is a plus for the community. And the continued contribution to local economy and tax basis is a very important factor as well. So the, I think the heart of the matter is, is the setback flexibility and how your ordinance allows for that. And we're simply saying this seems to be an appropriate application for reducing that five-hundred setback. We did a little research on the adjacent municipalities, and just a simple user-friendly bar graph shows Caledonia at five-hundred feet. Grand Rapids has no setback, except from the property line. Cascade is, it's a two-hundred-foot setback from an off-site dwelling. And then for Berry County, excavation must be at least fifty feet from a property line or roadway, and machinery must maintain a hundred-foot setback from property line or roadways, but does not have a dwelling setback. Thornapple has a two-hundred-foot setback from an off-site dwelling. And then Gaines has a hundred-foot setback, and Leighton Township, a property line setback, but no dwelling setback, and that property line setback is a hundred feet. So I think you can see from there, the five-hundred feet seems to be a rather conservative setback, and I think that change was made in two thousand and three. And if anybody on this board was part of making that change, it perhaps would be interested to know why that five-hundred was put in there. But I'm just sensing that because of that extensive five-hundred-foot setback, there was also that option to reduce it under the proper circumstances. And we just feel like this is the proper circumstance as it relates to mining in this area. There's no crushing, there's no stonework or gravel, it's simply sand, and it seems to, seems to be an appropriate request to reduce that setback. And as I mentioned, we're requesting the hundred-and-fifty-foot setback for the distance from adjacent off-site properties. Setback approval would allow for efficient use of the PRMR zone land, avoids leaving valuable resources untapped, supports local construction project, and protects neighbors with appropriate buffers and safety measures. I think it'd be beneficial for you, I don't know how many of you have read the minutes from the February planning commission meeting. I think there were some things not indicated on those minutes that I think would be important for you to know. I think it was Tim who made the original proposal to approve adding the mining area, but not reducing the setback. Following that motion, and I think the seconding of that motion, there was quite a bit of back-and-forth discussion. And part of the discussion, as I recall it and in reviewing some of the tapes, was that there was talk about how the property ultimately gets developed. And as part of that development, there's no setback buffers whatsoever along the property. We need to meet the RR requirements of two-acre lots, but grading can occur, excuse me, grading can occur right up to the property line. And that discussion went back and forth for a while. There was a indication maybe to table until maybe some further information could be provided. But ultimately, the decision was, hey, if they want to do something, they can come back later. And so the vote went on, and I think it was six to one or something. But I guess I mentioned that only because I think there were some questions there, and I had kind of attributed to the fact that we, as an applicant, didn't have much opportunity to make a presentation. The public spent about an hour presenting their valid concerns and questions, which, which, again, are valid. And then when it came to us, it was like we needed to be laser-focused, and we don't have a whole lot of time. And it just felt like we didn't, we didn't have the opportunity to make the presentation that we were hoping to make so that everybody had a clear understanding of what was being requested. And as part of that, we revised just the graphics on our plans that I think would be helpful for everyone to understand. I'll just hone in on the... So originally, this plan, which is identical to the one that I have been showing, we showed this pink area, and that was basically to indicate the area that was to be included back in the mining. Well, I think people were looking at that and said, wow, you're mining that whole area, and that is not the case. And that's why I think we went ahead and indicated in a bold line here, the areas that we are proposing to mine. And that's about of the, I'll call it fifty acres. Of the fifty acres, about fourteen acres is proposed to be mined. We're not going a hundred-and-fifty feet from each house. I'll kind of just go around. It's three hundred feet from this home here, and this home is, you know, has already seen some of the impact of the mining, and to my understanding, there hasn't been any concern. So we're over five hundred from that one, over five hundred from that one, that one, this one, and then here's where we, well, I'm sorry, here, we're thirteen feet shy of the five hundred, but very close. And then these, this one's at two ninety, this one's at two sixty-three, and this is the closest one at a hundred-and-seventy-four feet. All maintaining our hundred-foot setback, but because the home here is the closest to our mining operation, this kind of dictates where is the, is the one that has the closest distance to our mining. And then two hundred and forty, two hundred and eighty-two, two forty-six, three seventy-three, and then over five hundred. So I guess I just point that out because there were, there were some concerns about, you know, where we're doing the mining, and here it clearly illustrates the limits of the mining that we're proposing. There was also some questions on, okay, what are the grades actually going to look like after the mining's completed? Are we complying? And the answer is yes. This is an enlargement of the plan that I had just shown you. And it, whoops, and it does have the aerial under it and some existing contours as well as the proposed. So this area here is the area that has the largest cut slope. There's an existing knob right here. We're basically maintaining the area. It's fairly flat from the property line to this point here, and continues up a little bit, but then drops significantly down. And we're starting at that hundred-foot setback, which is actually a hundred-and-seventy-four from the home, and then going down at a one-on-three. And then this prepares us for a potential street that gets constructed so that we tie into grades that we need to maintain here from Cherry Valley. And if a future drive were to be built here and then constructed down to the lower levels of what is about seven-twenty-five here, and providing for grades that meet the standards for slopes and stuff that your private street or public street requirements would have us need to meet. So there is another graphic which is a cut, section AA here, it'd be a profile that if you were standing and looking, if you could look at the face of the cut. if you could look at the face of the cut in these two areas, they would basically look like this. And so this is our southerly property line. This is the existing grade along that cut section that's above here, the section AA. So the home is here, and then the common property line, the 100-foot setback, or 174 from the home. And then a one-on-three slope, and then a moderate grade down to the bottom of the pit. And then a similar cross-section here that shows the same thing in that area. And it's a bit more moderate, where we take a slope down at a one-on-three, and then it's basically leveled out to 730, which is 725, 730 is the slope or is the floor of the existing pit. And so I think with that additional documentation, that would help in explaining what we're doing and the limits of the activity for the mining. Nate, or Todd from Reesman Corhorn, prepared a letter that I assume is in your packet, and basically explained that the expansion does not change the operations. It simply adds area to the existing mine. The processing and crushing stays in the current location, which is in the middle of the existing pit. And that only happens during certain times of the year. The expansion area can be mined safely if the 150-foot setback is allowed. Otherwise, there's little gain to the resources. He had prepared a sketch that showed if you take 500 feet from the affected homes, it pretty much eliminates the opportunity to do any major mining on that site. And he verified that our restoration plan meets the ordinance standard. And he prepared a draft resolution, I think. And I think there's two resolutions in front of you. One, that does approve and allow for the 150-foot setback, and one that does not. But there was nothing in the letter essentially that would concern him as a township engineer for allowing for the reduced setback. The current pit is actively mined, reclaimed, and reclamation is in the process. There was a question on, at the meeting, you know, how much mining they have left. And I think that there was a document submitted that there's 45% area left to mine. Well, that's, I think, I think it's important for me to clarify that. And the best way I can do that is through a worksheet. So for the overall site, the existing mining, there's a few blue areas. There's some areas in blue that I've highlighted. There's one right here, which... This area right here is right underneath the drive that leads up to 68th Street. So obviously, that can't be mined yet. A large portion of that, from my understanding, years ago, has been mined. There may be some additional sand, but that would be near the last that would take place. This area is being actively mined. I mentioned the area that was within 500 feet of this home here, and that's been restored. It is certainly getting close to being completely restored at this point. But this area is being actively mined. These two areas are, some of it's being mined, but a lot of it is in place yet. One of the reasons that I would suggest that that remain as long as possible is when the crushing operation does occur here seasonally, it's an excellent buffer to anything to the west to maintain whatever sound issues there are. And so there's no active mining happening on this one here. And occasionally, they are mining that area. And then the final one is north of the East Lake. And that area doesn't have, it's not an ideal sand. It's actually, has some fines in it, and it's used for certain applications, but it's not needed that often. And so that's been a dormant area that may or may not be something that they want to mine to the point where they could expand the lake, but that's to be determined. So having said all that, there really is a need to go to the south. It's not a matter of, we're just doing it because we want to. We need the material, and the amount of material that the market demands is high. And that's the reason, obviously, that they're in the business they are. So I guess the other final plan that part of your ordinance requires is, okay, you're gonna mine this, what are you gonna leave us with? What's the final product? And this is simply a concept. And your ordinance requires we provide a concept. But obviously, anything that happens beyond the mining would need to occur through the appropriate process with the Planning Commission and Township Board for any development within the township. But we've simply shown a layout that illustrates, I believe it's 13 parcels that are two acres in size, and they have the appropriate frontage. And in order to capitalize on a development like this, the mining of the area that is in the central 14 acres of this, 40 acres, is key to providing the development and also allowing for capturing the resource. There's been concern about, you know, does this affect my land value or my home value? And I'm no appraiser, I'm no assessor, but I've been involved in many mining operations that have turned into developments. And those, from my observation, I don't see where land value is an issue. The Den Hardtigs are deeply committed to this area. They're engaged, they're invested. Some of the development has occurred on the easterly side of what used to be mined. They're not going anywhere, and I think they want to leave a project here that everybody can be proud of. And I think that would only enhance the neighborhood. And any concerns there, from my perspective, are not significant, albeit there's gonna be minor temporary mining operations occurring. But yeah, I think with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I've done a lot of rattling, and hopefully you have some questions that I can answer to clarify anything. I don't know if there's anything, Kim, that you have to offer, but be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'm gonna ask you to wait for questions. I'd like to allow public comments, so they can put questions on the record, put their comments on the record. Then we can ask you to return, if needed, to answer specific questions.
Okay, I think I'll leave this one up. That's probably the most appropriate one. That shows an enlargement of the area of concern.
Could you be the one that actually shows distance to people's homes? I think there's gonna be...
Let me zoom in on that.
People who might want to discuss that. So what your request is and where that would lead people as far as... Okay, yep, that'd be helpful. I think that shows both. So we'll leave that up for discussion. We'll pull up others if necessary. If you could just have a seat. And now we'll open up public comment on this. And we'll be generous in allowing any public comment as well. We gave the applicant adequate time to present. People with public comment, please come forward, identify yourself, and the floor is yours. Yes, ma'am.
My husband sent a letter, and I don't know if that's part of the...
I'm sorry, could you...
My husband sent a letter as well. I don't know if it's part of the packet.
Is that Mr. Hicks?
It is.
Yep.
Okay, so I don't need to read that, then?
You can, if you'd like to read it in your, but we've received it and we're aware of it.
Okay.
It'll be included in our...
Because I have my own comments as well, so I don't want...
Let's go to those.
Okay. So I'm his wife, and I'm Natalie Hicks. We live on 7462, and we moved there three years ago. And before we bought the house, appreciate the comparison of Grand Rapids and Cascade and all those others. We looked in all those other locations as well for our home when we bought. And we saw this house, and we looked into the PMR to see, you know, how far that setback was. We did our due diligence as far as researching how close they could get to our property line. And we went ahead with the purchase because of the 500 feet, you know? So that seemed like a very safe distance. 100 and 150 feet is not such a safe distance. So especially, I have a five-year-old, I have a 10-year-old. There's at least 10 other kids on the yard, on that street, at that cul-de-sac, that play on a regular basis in our backyard, and the house-in-the-middles backyard there, that's one of the closest. So again, you know, I appreciate the concern or the noting that the safety is not gonna be an issue, but I just disagree. So I disagree that having something that close to our property line is not gonna be a safety hazard, especially when you've got small kids. The other part is the noise, which is mentioned. Again, I appreciate the fact that they are doing it in condensed hours and watching the decibel level that they, you know, mentioned. On a windy day, where we're sitting in our backyard, we can hear it right now. So if it's that much closer by 400 feet, then I can imagine it's only gonna get louder. So again, you know, I appreciate the concern and that they are looking into it and they're mindful of it. But mindfulness does not prevent us from hearing the noise. It does not prevent us from having the safety issues. And mindfulness also does not prevent the fact that, again, with real estate, I appreciate he does not, he did say he's not a real estate expert. We did have a real estate expert that lived on that street, and conveniently, they moved. So they moved right before this whole thing is going down. So again, you know, I appreciate that, but I do kind of just want to make sure that my investment in the property stays whole, that the safety of my kids stays whole, and that the noise that's already there does not increase.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you point out your home on the map?
I am 7462. I believe I am the... I can't tell where it is on here, actually. I don't think it's...
I, your home doesn't show up, but this is the north block line.
The caddy square, yeah.
So you're about 300 feet off the property line. So it'd be about 400 feet to the mining from our house.
Thank you. And if anyone else comes up, just so we know your perspective or your location. Thank you. Okay, additional public comment?
Hi, I'm Sherri Woods, 7436 Willow Point, and that's my house, right there. So I guess I have some questions. We had Don come and give us a survey of property because our markings had been gone past years. And it was just eye-opening to see how close that distance would be that they can mine, so that we needed to have that visible knowledge on our own. A question about the dust. I think you said there was regular spraying to contain the dust. Is that correct? What is regular? I don't know how to answer that.
If we could pose a... I'd prefer that we gather the questions, and then they can answer them, and we'll keep track of all the questions.
Okay, so that's my question, because we will be seeing dust. The distance that I'm curious about is how many feet is in this depth here? Do you see where, because my husband and my desire is to see less of that space. Like, they're asking for 150 feet. We would prefer half of the 500. So if we went 250, I don't know where that is. I know the challenge is when we're looking at what you were talking about. Here's gold, right here, right in front of my house, or behind my house. So if I said I preferred 250, I'm supposing that limits everything that you're really wanting. That, if that's true, that's just, I want it noted, I guess.
It's fair, if you look at the gap between the property line and the red line, that's 100. So double that.
It just completely makes it impossible.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say it out loud, I guess.
Yep.
That's about it. I just, I don't know if there's any chance that this line, because these are all moving, can be jaggedy. Jaggedy around my house. That's it, really. Not too very, much more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional public comment? Yes, sir.
Okay, Archie Warner, 6464, Broadmoor Island, Harderwater Landscaping. I've lived in Caledonia for 50 years, or over 50 years, and I've run a business here for all that time. And I've worked with the Den Hardtogs in Cherry Valley for that time. And they've been, I think, a good resource to the community. They provide necessary services for the community. They pay taxes, they supply minerals locally, they reduce the miles trucks run on roads and pollute by being local. They take our spoils as fill, thus not damaging other properties by just dumping willy-nilly. They recycle concrete and ash fall, thus keeping it out of the environment. So to me, life is all about compromise. And I understand Cherry Valley wants to get as much as they can out of there. And of course, as a business, and we use their material, we would like to see that as well. But people also have rights. So life's about compromise. What can we do? Are you, one of the questions you can ask, are they gonna fence the top of that hill in to minimize the safety aspect? If they don't need the whole 50 acres for the PMR, why are they asking for 50? Can't they ask for the 14 they want? At least that limits it. And then the big question is, what's the timeline? How long does everybody have to put up with the noise and the dust from that? And if that's, if they can get in there and get that done in a short time, great. That limits the amount of time that people are inconvenienced. But I think that's an important question. Would it be possible to put a berm behind these homes and landscape it? You know, as a landscaper, I guess I'm a little bit prone to that kind of thing. But, you know, if these people don't want to see that, and if they want to limit somewhat the dust and the noise, how about a berm? How about some landscaping? So with that, if you've got all those questions, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I am trying to keep a list, hope my fellow board members are as well. All right, yes, sir.
Going from 500 to 150 seems like, Chris Thomas did it before, 98, 10 Creek Fu Land. Seems like 500 to 150 is a huge change. We're not Grand Rapids, we're not Cascade. I think we're better than that, Caledonia, so we put up those regulations for a reason. Kids, there's lots of kids back there. They're going to walk around in that area. It's just, you know, maybe they're not supposed to, but you know how kids are gonna be. And that's gonna be dangerous for them. Dust is gonna be all over those houses. And I agree with the gentleman behind me, if it's 14 acres they want, why are they asking for 50? Because it seemed a lot of, well, we could do this, we've done a little bit before, but maybe we could do that later. And then what happens to the rest of Caledonia Township is that 150 everywhere. And that opens up a whole lot of can of worms in that area. So it just seems like they knew what they were doing when they first mined that area. People knew what they had when they bought the house. Why change it? People put in rules, what, 2000-oh-something, whatever? And they put those rules in for reasons, to protect the people and to protect things that were happening in our community and our people that are paying taxes as well.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Beth Law, and I live at 78968th Street. I've been walking the trails and the pathways through the quarry for five years now. I'm here tonight to talk about the environmental stewardship I see almost daily by Pete and his family. At this point, I'd like to, can I bring these to you?
Sure.
I've seen all sorts of wildlife down there, including a red-tailed hawk, barred owls, kingfishers, many varieties of butterflies and birds, all of which thrive on abundant milkweed, seeds from the plants, and they take refuge in the reeds around the lake. Even a family of foxes founded den to inhabit, to raise their young. Pete and his family work tirelessly to maintain and enrich their property by planting new trees and reviving areas with new grasses and other plants, mostly native plants at that. As an official tree hugger, I thank the Den Hardic family for being such responsible keepers of their little part of this planet and for gradually, for generously allowing me to experience this wonderful place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, additional public comment? Yes, sir?
Scott Felting, sixty-nine twenty-two sixty-eighth Street. I'm on the north side of the pit. We've been there thirty-five and a half years now. And, um, as far as dust goes, prevailing wind comes out of the southwest and it goes my direction. I've never really had too much of a problem. The hundred-foot buffer of trees, that's really huge. I know I used to come here back in the days when it was a fifty-foot setback and there was reason. I don't know when it changed, how, why it changed, but I think the reality of lack of materials nowadays, it's very, very difficult to find materials, especially close to town like this. I think, uh, you've got to be responsible to take it out in a, in a way that doesn't impact people. So, I would, I would say, everything I've seen Pete do, we get in a lot of pits and this is by far one of the better pits I've ever seen. If Pete maintains it, he takes care of it. From what I understand, when there's an issue, um, I don't think he's too slow on taking care of it. So, I think concerns can be addressed. My personal opinion is five hundred feet is, is a, is a tremendous waste of material. Because you only get it where God put it. You get one chance to do it. Once it's out, you develop it properly. So, I would, uh, I would not have a problem with a hundred, a hundred-foot setback. But my, my part has been done for a while. But I don't, um, we get out there, my wife and I go, but there's some, once in a while, and everything I see is very, very, um, responsibly done. And, uh, and as far as a business and economy, I think the material that's there is important to mine while we can. Because if you put something else there, you won't get it. I look at downtown Grand Rapids, there's eighty to a hundred feet of sand with all kinds of houses, no medical mile and everything. It's material that'll be lost forever. But here you have something that's been here for forty or fifty years. And, um, my suggestion would be to get what you can out of it, do it responsibly, take care of concerns of the neighbors. And I think that, uh, from what I know of Pete for the last thirty-five, thirty-six years, he's the guy that can take care of it, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Additional public comment? I think that closes public comment. I do have, I have made a list of some questions. So, if you could come back, I'll ask some and board members if you have questions you think I missed from the public comment. We can, or if follow-up is needed, then we'll do that and then we'll begin more discussion and questions of the applicant. Uh, the, you mentioned spraying for dust. They wanted to know what that entailed and what that would cover. Can you briefly identify what the dust control measures are in your operation?
It's basically a water truck that is on-site continuously and, and provides for, uh, for watering the areas that have concern for dust, so.
Okay. As far as fencing, uh, what fencing can be provided to address, uh, safety concerns? Or what is being proposed and what are, what options are there?
Well, at, at this point, um, we're just following what the requirements were for the existing mining operation. That's either fencing or some sort of brush pileup or berms in the area of the active mining. However, um, in, in an effort to address some of the concerns to the south, uh, the applicants willing to fence off their south property line completely to, uh, to provide, in the area of the mining, to provide for that additional safety.
Okay. Timelines, uh, do you know how long it will take to remove the material if the request is you've presented it is allowed?
It's based on the market, but the market is strong right now. So, um, I think our mining operation has three-year renewal periods and, and our next renewal for the existing operation is next May. And we would certainly think, uh, a couple more renewals beyond that. So, six years, um, would be the maximum. And if things continue to go the way they are today, um, that could, uh, that could be reduced by half. It's just hard to predict.
Okay, uh, we're focused on fourteen acres, but the request is for greater than that, uh, forty-five or fifty acres. Can you address that?
Sure. Uh, the fifty acres is the portion of the property that's already zoned, uh, PMR. Our permit, um, limits us to work within that red area. Now, there will be, there will be, um, movement of traffic from the north end of that red dot dotted line to exit out the sixty-eight Street. But all the, the pure mining will only occur within those fourteen acres. That can be reiterated in your resolution. We're simply adding the property that, or, or the applicants adding the property that they own to the mining permit. But there's, there's limitations to the active area of that mining.
Okay, the most immediate neighbor pointed out that the hundred feet, uh, doesn't, wishes that'd be greater and looked at two hundred feet, uh, just her estimates of where that would be. And, and in essence, asked the question, does that eliminate, uh, all the material? Or what, I guess I'll put it in open, what, what would a, a two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty-foot property line setback do as far as your operations and, uh, the amount of material to be removed?
Yeah, the, the, the area directly north of, of her home, there's, there's a prominent knoll, if you've been out to the site, and that's directly north of the home. And we're, of course, maintaining the, the hundred feet of that, um, knoll from the south property line to where the mining occurs. But because of its extensive height, um, there's a lot of material there. And if we were to take that hundred-foot setback and go another hundred and fifty feet, it wouldn't reduce it as much as if we held the five hundred, but it would certainly impact, uh, not only the mining operation, but how we deal with that, um, rather pronounced knob when we go to develop those parcels that I illustrated on the, on the concept plan.
And so, just to be clear on that, then if, if, if you were not able to do it, uh, if two-hundred-and-fifty was considered as a compromise and you weren't able to remove it, would there still, would there likely be grading in that area, uh, as part of your de, development plan?
Yes.
Okay, so the fact that she looks at a nice upward wooded slope now, that would disappear under what you're proposing, but will that likely disappear under a development plan?
That is correct.
Okay. And as far as berming, uh, at some point, the hundred point, is there something that could be done to eliminate the visual or to, to soften the visual, uh?
Yeah.
Of the neighbors?
The hundred-foot setback, I think, is, is, uh, is completely wooded in a majority of that area where the most mining takes place. And so, um, I think a berm wouldn't, uh, serve much purpose. In addition, all the mining occurs going down, right? So, you really don't see any activity from the closest home or any of the other homes. It's, it's all going down and, and that's, that's unique to mining, which is a, a plus to help mitigate the, the impact to those neighbors.
Okay, and then, uh, the question was raised, could you do a jaggedy line or an undulating line? And I've seen other iterations that you presented to the planning commission, where if the five hundred feet or any setback from homes was applied, you'd, by definition, because the homes aren't equal.
Right.
That is what occurs. My bias is that that makes compliance harder, because you have a, a operational line that is undulating. So, I prefer that if we can come to agreement on some line, that makes it a lot easier to make sure that line is maintained. So, I think we could do a consideration. I think that's where the planning commission, uh, once they got lost. But it was, it's a lot harder to focus on a, a, take your protractor and draw five hundred or three hundred feet from a house and that, that creates, hard to follow in the field, in my opinion. I'd rather us be able to put a stake on either end of the pit and there, the line is the line, whether that's five hundred or one hundred. So, uh, we could do it, but I, I don't know that that's the best solution, though it does give some comfort, relief to the neighbors. With the hundred-foot setback or that's your request, and I assume that all the trees and so on would be maintained in there?
Yes.
During mining?
During mining, yes.
What about during the development plan? Would those continue to be maintained? Is that a, a benefit, uh, or a, a promise, or is it unknown what will happen? You, you mentioned that there is no do-not-disturb and you can move dirt right up to the property line. Is there anything being offered to the neighbors that won't someday show, uh, something coming right up to their property line? Or the, the loss of all the, that, uh, trees and the remaining, uh, slope that's there?
At, at this point, uh, no promises is made or, or, um, any, um, additional, uh, control from, from the applicant's perspective. The, the, uh, building setbacks for, uh, this zone is fifty feet. So, people could build as, as some of our neighbors have built within fifty feet. Certainly, uh, the opportunity to build within fifty feet should be, uh, allowed for those future parcels, too. So, yeah, at this point, we're committed during the mining operation and, and that's when probably the most, um, um, impact to our neighbors will take place as we're committing to that hundred-foot setback. But at this point, we're, we're looking to develop that property as any other applicant would, meeting your requirements, whatever they are at the time of development.
Okay. So, all the questions I have, um, board members of the applicant questions, before we begin our general discussion?
I've got one on the concept site layout. And that kind of goes back to the discussion from the planning commission that you mentioned. Was hoping to have additional, maybe conceptual grading of especially what that access road looks like and what those slopes might be as you're coming in off of Cherry Valley. So, I'm disappointed that it doesn't appear to be any further developed six months later. I'm concerned about what the slopes would be for that road coming in, based on the proposed contours that you have for the mine. Is there any additional information that you can share?
We, as, as far as it relates to any grades coming off of Cherry Valley, we did look at concepts, worksheet forms, um, and, um, the, the grades in the area coming off of Cherry Valley, excuse me, coming off of Cherry Valley certainly are moderate. I mean, we have to maintain the grades north and south of us as we go through that, uh, narrow portion of the property. And then from there, as I, as I mentioned, um, we go from, you know, essentially the grades within, um, this area, which we're really not mining right now, are, are very moderate. And then, and they're the highest elevation. And then we have to make our way down to, uh, probably, right now, the floor is, I think, around seven-twenty-five and, and we need to elevate the streets for providing adequate separation from the water table. But those grades, we have looked at them and they certainly meet any type of typical standard that your private drive would allow.
So, just looking at the cross-section sheet that has the grading, it looks like you have portions of where the future road would go as a one-on-three slope. That's what I'm, I'm just trying to understand, how far back would you actually need to cut to build the road in? And, um, so, left of where you currently are.
Right here.
Keep going, further west, right there, yeah. The road goes right through that whole area on the concept. And I understand it's just a concept, but it's still got to get out to Cherry Valley at some point, so.
Right. Yeah, we, we've looked at, at other concepts as well and, and although we could do something like this and, and moderate those, the grades right in, in this area here, but the other option is to come through here and then, and then come back into the alignment that the concept plan shows. But, um, yeah, there, there's a lot of different oppo, opportunities. We would probably be providing more grading within this area to, to provide for the, the parcels here that would be developed. And so, at this point, um, we're, we're just committing to doing the, um, the, the mining grading plan. And I think what, what I was understanding and, and, um, looking at for the ultimate grading plan is that there's no setback requirements. And so, any type of grading that we would do, if it's for drainage, backyard drainage, that's key. The drain commission, your township engineer looks at them closely. So, we have to do, uh, extensive grading to accommodate, uh, drainage and, and, uh, for this area, more than likely drain fields. And so, but all that occurs under a different set of rules. And, um, that was our point. This site is going to get developed some way. And when it gets developed, either after the mining or absent of mining, it's going to get developed with the requirements that your present ordinance allows. And that will be, um, closer to the property lines than our mining presently proposes.
Okay, other board questions of the applicant?
I don't have a, a comment or question so much as a comment or clarification. I, I've looked with interest at your comparison of other townships or jurisdictions with relation to the setbacks, the, the bar chart, so to speak. Now, and I did my own research on this and, and I find that you're, you're, you're not right on some of this. For example, you show Cascade as an off-site dwelling setback of two hundred feet, but it's a two-hundred-foot property line setback, not a, not a homeowner setback. Same is true of Gaines Township. It's a two-hundred-foot setback from any residential district, not from a home, from the property line. And then Ada, I, I looked up Ada as well, because we, um, we take a lot of hints from Ada. Sometimes I think we worship at the feet of Ada. But nevertheless, theirs is the same. It's two hundred feet from the property line. And then if you add to it the, the setback that's required in the residential zoning duty, there's fifty. So, that's two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And to be honest with you, and I, I don't want to get into so much, because this is time for question, but because it's germane to the topic, is, is I'm not a big fan of a setback from the dwelling. And the reason I'm not is that, um, one of my walks, for example, uh, I walk along a property that the pool, they have a pool, very nice pool and pool patio. It's right on the property line. And so, what you're saying, though, is, well, the house is fifty feet away. But if I'm on the pool patio, I'm a hundred feet from a bulldozer. And so, I think as a general rule, that we should be looking at property line setbacks. I think this would answer Brian's concern, because then you have more of a continuous contour instead of trying to follow all the houses in and out. But the setback should be two hundred feet. And I think, given that comparison, especially with some of our neighboring townships, that seems to be, uh, a property line setback that I think is, is, is pretty reasonable. And I would like to see our ordinance move in that direction rather than identifying, okay, this house and that house. direction rather than identifying, okay, this house and that house and measuring the line, but say, you know, I think all of us on our property feel like we have the right to enjoy the privacy and quiet privacy right up to our property line. And even though our house can't be within 50 feet of it, other things can. You know, my kid's, grandkid's treehouse, for example, or sandbar, swingset, pool patio. So a lot of outdoor living space could be right there. And the way this ordinance said, it's within 100 feet of that, you could have a mining operation going on. And just by way of perspective, this room is 50 feet. If you go out there, it's the, the back bumper of a car right there in the parking lot, that's 100 feet. That's pretty close. And so, you know, looking at it from how would I feel if that were my house, um, I, 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 I certainly wouldn't be enthusiastic about that.
Okay. It gets to take Dick's comments and put it in a question. He's raised the question of what you've submitted. Are you, are you comfortable that what you've submitted?
Well, he's, I'd have to recheck. I-
I, I do think it's helpful to look at our neighbors. So we'll, we'll, we'll accept it as, as entered, but I appreciate the, the point of looking at our neighbors. So any other questions for the, the applicant?
I guess one more. It's less critical, but I think still worth asking. The, so you have the Eastern Lake and then a little bit west of that, there seems to be a smaller knoll, um, down from there. Well, yep.
Right here?
Keep going into the pink. Yeah, that area right there, is that not intended to be mined? It's not in the red area, but it looks like it still has valuable material. Just want to understand for the record.
I believe that, that is to be maintained, this area. Yes, we're not mining that.
Thank you.
Could you pull up where you have, um, you have a road that already comes off Thornapple River Drive? Where your concept, where your concept is, it looks like there's a road that goes into this area. I'm just trying to, you have, you had a different map. Go back to the, um, one where the concept plots are, please.
Off Thornapple or off Cherry Valley?
Off Thornapple. Okay. Right here. Pull that up.
This one?
See, there's a road, there's a house way over to my right, right by the, the lake.
These right here?
By six and seven.
This one?
Right in there. So you could come off of here and do, do more i- in the future. So you're given a concept of, you're giving us a concept off Cherry Valley, but in the future you could come off a different road. And that's why this is kind of basic, correct?
Um, thi- this is basic. However, Kim can cor- correct me, but there is absolutely no intent, we'll put that on the record, of extending this road beyond where it presently is.
Not even road.
What I'm trying to say is, is the concept is basically just for this parcel, but in the future, when you come to the township, that's why you did a basic instead of a real detailed, is what I'm trying to, I, I'm assuming that's why you did that. Like, yes. Okay. Thank you.
I would have, my understanding is the mining permit only allows them to truck to 68th Street anyway, so I don't think-
No, no, no. This is for future.
Oh, I see.
We're talking about what's next.
So, so I understand, I, I-
All right.
I totally understand why they did a real basic layout.
Questions? Any other questions for the applicant? I have one other question. Do you feel you've had adequate time to present?
Yes.
Your request. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. And now I typically don't do this, but, uh, public comment, having heard any reaction, follow-up questions, uh, but just substantive or clarification, uh, that hasn't already been covered. Great. Just want to make sure everyone feels they've had their chance to address, uh, the issue. He and I'll open it to board comment. Uh, I, I will tee it up in the sense that this has been to the planning commission, uh, and some time was spent, uh, discussing it. Uh, the recommenda- and Tim can clear, correct me if I'm wrong, the recommendation to us was to approve the addition of this land into their PMR permit, uh, but to maintain the, uh, the generic or the standard setbacks that are within the ordinance, which would be 500 feet from, uh, occupied dwellings and how many feet from the property line?
I think it's just 500 feet from an occupied dwelling.
And that is, uh, the, what is the issue at hand, I would, I would say. Um, yeah. So I present that as how it's coming to us from the planning commission. So with that, I'd open to board, uh, reaction to what, uh, we have before us. We can send it back to the planning commission if we believe there's things they should consider. We can, uh, affirm the recommendation and the action that it came to us as, or we can, uh, take action and, uh, I believe we can approve, uh, a, a different standard than that which was, uh, recommended by the planning commission. Those are, are three options at least that are most obvious. All right. So to board discussion, Mr. Zoller?
You know, I can appreciate all the neighbors that came in on Willow Point. That development was developed when we had a 50-foot from the property line setback. So we've got to remember some of these things. So this could have been mined when they developed this and it would have been 50 feet. Now they're looking for 150 feet. I think that's a step in the right direction. Now, we did change the ordinance and I think I know the year we did it, but, uh, you know, um, sometimes we go a little far on things and 500 does seem excessive. Um, this 150 from, from dwellings seems, um, somewhat reasonable and a lot of the other municipalities I've looked at are that or less. So, some of my thoughts.
Dick, could you repeat at least, uh, and again, this isn't a court of law in your oath, but what, what was your research as far as property line setbacks or dwelling setbacks?
I, I took the bar graph and I, I realized that there are more townships or entities on there than, than, than I've looked at. But I, I took the ones that would be more, you know, kind of like Caledonia or more similar to us. And for me, that was Gaines, Ada and Cascade. And I just wanted to affirm that the information on the chart was what was actually in the ordinance. And I, I actually copied the ordinance. So in Ada, for example, no excavation shall be made closer than 200 feet from a residential property. Um, I'm just reading it. And this is Gaines within, um, no excavation shall occur within 100 feet of a roadway, within 200 feet of an off-site resident housing development or residential district. Um, so that would be the property line. And then this is, uh, what do I got?
Gaines.
Here. No part shall take place closer than 200 feet from the nearest property line. So, you know, I, 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 I can, I can understand the 500 feet, especially when you look at it in those terms. Seems a bit severe, but by the same token, I don't think 100 feet is, is enough. Um, often I, in the morning, I sit and I look out over my front yard and I try to imagine what it would be like if 100 feet from where I'm sitting, you know, there's a loader or excavator and how would that, now I'm in my house, but if I were outdoors, um, I think that would seriously affect my enjoyment of my property. I'm not sure why the fixation on the residential dwelling. I, I look at my little piece of the earth and think that, well, you know, I, I want to be able to enjoy all of that, not to shut up my house because, you know, that's where they measure from. I, I just don't think that's a good standard and our neighbors, uh, around us seem to have moved in that direction as well.
We may have started that trend. I think we may have been the first to have a residential setback. And I agree with you, it's not the best way to measure because you end up with this, so.
So I did, I do agree with what Dick was saying in, in the Gaines part where he said residential district. Most of their mines are in ag districts. That's why they can be 100 feet away, which is rural areas.
We draw a distinction for different zones, so that makes it even more-
Yeah, all these properties are rural residential, so they are residential.
Those are, but residential district and those are ag where they're mining operations.
Right, and game.
And ours was ag until we changed it to RO.
Yeah, but it's RO.
Till we changed it to RO.
RO.
Okay.
Okay. Um, more discussion. Continue.
I'll go next. Um, I was a junior in college in 2003, so I don't fully know the history of what, why the board changed or did what they did, but I do respect my forefathers and suspect that there was a purpose in that change to 500 feet. So, um, and I guess in response to trustee Zoller's comment, for the residential neighborhood south of the mine, that I'm sure not all the same people live in that neighborhood that were there when, you know, when it first built. And the people that live there now, one of which provide testimony tonight, that they bought under the new circumstances. And I think that's important to understand. Um, I think that there is a different dust and noise nuisance that provides significant consequences if we were to change. So I continue to, yes, I think we should change the zoning so that it's in the PMR again, but I don't think we should change the setback. Um, I appreciated Mr. Warner's desire for compromise and that's what I tried to bring up with the planning commission meeting. And I'm still disappointed because I think there was some common ground that could have been shown by a grading plan for what a new neighborhood could look like, where you could probably mine a little more that made sense, but it's not provided, so I can't approve something that doesn't exist. And, um, lastly, just the current permit says that it expires and it can't be renewed after May 4th of 2031 because there was a question on how much longer can they mine? Who the body is that can extend that, I assume is us, but I don't know. So.
But the current expiration is 2031 unless we decide it's not.
Right.
Okay. But just so you know, how long can this go on? The answer is 2031.
Until all the sand is gone, is the answer.
Well, and we've extended all permits when asked, uh, at least thus far. So, but good question. Okay. Other thoughts, observations?
Well, we also, you know, we have to remember, you know, the setback stuff. By right, the owner right now, he could come right to the property line and start peeling that dirt away and pushing it to the northern part of his, um, property where it's not in the PMR without having a, uh, PMR because it's, he can cont- contour his land how he lo- how he wants. That can go all the way to 74 feet from someone's house. He can start pushing dirt. So I'm, I'm leaning more towards a 150 because if not, something can be done. Now they have even less control. At least they're going to have some most likely tree line, something. Whereas like I said, you could just say tough, we're not going to develop it, or not, we're not going to mine it, we're going to develop it. Then it's a whole different thing. So.
But, but that can occur regardless.
That can occur. But if they start doing this mining and, and restoration, they're not going to want to go push dirt after, um, the mining is over because they're already going to have their grade and everything set.
Well, from what I heard from trustee Bradshaw, that at least from his perspective at the planning commission, knowing what happens after the mining would affect his decision about the scope of the mining. Uh, and that wasn't addressed there. And I haven't seen it other than a conceptual plan addressed. So we, other than, you know, the clearest memory, uh, you know, I always say the faintest sink is better than the clearest memory. We don't have any guarantees, uh, things to hold people accountable to. Frankly, even hold, having things in the minutes, uh, doesn't hold people accountable unless it's captured in their permit or in a site plan. Uh, and so until the ink is dry, uh, there is no guarantee of if we go 500 of the neighbors, that this will be preserved. And if we go 150, that this will be preserved. So if the intention is to, that recognize that minerals are needed, but to give the, the longest insurance to the neighbors of a best outcome, uh, we're short of that because we don't have the information, uh, or the, the indication of the ability to, to do that. Uh, and we can't require that, but it can certainly-
Could they offer it?
It could be offered. And so, uh, we, we can consider with what's before us. We, I would go further. We can only consider with what's before us. We don't have, uh, any guarantees of what can happen up to the property line after mining. We can only control during mining and then it's, it's open to the property owner's desire. Frankly, the ultimate property owner's desire, they could not touch a thing, do it as shown that's on the screen right now. And the new property owner could come in and clear cut all the trees and level it off to their desire. So, um-
But they wouldn't.
They wouldn't?
No.
Probably not.
Obviously have a developed plan before, Nick.
No, I mean, they clear spaces for-
For home sites.
They grade.
Home sites, pool barns.
The home sites and so forth, but.
They would have to grade this.
It was a commercial lot. I debate you on the subject, but on a home site, I tend to agree with you that there will be preservation because it makes it a lot more attractive. But, um, as to what our neighbors do, I, I am open to look that the standard seems to be 200 feet. If you look at Ada Cascade, Gaines, uh, uh, so I'm at least open to, uh, discussion. Our, it is allowed for us to consider it. It's, it's anticipated. And so, uh, that's the only reason we are having this discussion. If it wasn't, uh, uh, included for consideration, then we wouldn't have to spend our time on it. So I'm willing to consider, uh, but I'd be a lot more likely to consider something less than 200, the 150 or the 100, if there was some longer-term benefit. So just, that's not a motion, it's a statement of my current, uh, perspective.
I guess my only question would be directed to trustee Bradshaw because you are on the planning commission. It, it, was there a general overall reason why your recommendation as the planning commission is not to approve the setbacks? Is it due to that grading and sloping?
Yeah.
Or is there more to it than that?
I think it's, we had more, uh, public comment than we did tonight because I think it was public notice. I don't think tonight was. Um, and in general, a lot of the commentary was the same. It was dust, noise and safety. Um, I think the applicant has somewhat, you know, helped on the safety issue tonight by potentially offering fence, but the dust and the noise doesn't really change. Um, and there was a lot of concern on home values too. And, um, you know, I, I, I'm not a realtor, but I think it's a real thing that, you know, you don't want to live right next to an active mine and that might affect home values. And, and that's a period of time probably too. Maybe that's a 10-year, five-year, 20-year period, but if you happen to be wanting to sell your house in that period, that's a big deal to you. So I, I think that was the key testimony that was powerful to the planning commission.
Continuing just where I'm at. Um, the 200 feet that are, has become at least a standard with some of our peer communities has the effect of being a 250-foot setback because we have 50-foot dwelling setbacks.
From residence.
Uh, from residence. Yes. Uh, yep. And so currently we have 500 and that would be 250, just stating that from a math standpoint. Any, I guess, stopping sort of a motion, thoughts of a 200-foot property line setback for a point of discussion?
I, for my part, and I, you know, I don't want to offend the neighbors, but you know, I, I think given the, the 500 compared to where we are with some of our neighbors, I think perhaps that is overly restrictive perhaps and probably hard to defend. Um, I think we're in a safer place at 200 feet plus the home setback in that we can look to our peers and say, others are doing this and it's working out. What's interesting about, um, I know when we've been in battle with, uh, PMRs in the past, not Pete's, but some other ones that, you know, the onus was- you know, the onus was on us to demonstrate, um, serious consequences. In other words, we as the township, if we denied something, we had to demonstrate there were no serious consequence. The way our ordinance is written, the burden is on the applicant to, to prove that there will not be, and it's almost impossible to prove a negative, but I think in, in the way that this would be viewed, if we are challenged on it, is that we could at least look to our neighboring peers and say, you know, we're not the only ones, we're at five hundred feet, you're kinda out there on an island, and you're the only one. And so I think that puts us in a more precarious position if we're challenged.
Okay, additional thoughts? Just to, I don't wanna make a motion in order to fail, so.
Well, you know, our options are only two, we, we either have to approve what the planning commission has sent us, or we have to send it back to the planning. And, and so the idea would be, if we don't have the votes to pass the recommendations of the planning commission, which was a five or six to one, as I recall, is a pretty convincing vote, um, and I would second the motion if somebody would make it. But by the same token, if that fails, then it's not that we get to say anything other than it's going back to the planning commission, perhaps with some suggestions or recommendations of how we might like to see it. And then it really doesn't matter what they do, and then it's back to us again, so.
Can we ask to table this and talk to the applicant about some guarantees on the southern end of the property?
Well, there's nothing to prevent them to come back and ask for amendment to their approved plan either. I guess.
So, my question is.
We can ask their, their preference, but, uh.
Would they ask, would they prefer?
They're on the bus, we're driving, uh.
And I think either way, if they did that, it would still need to go through the planning commission process, and it wouldn't be a board decision immediately anyway.
Correct.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment of the PMR permit to include additional lands, but denying the request setback reduction.
Second.
Can you repeat which, which motion you're choosing?
The only one that can continue to go forward, the same one from the planning commission.
Okay, so, to approve the planning commission's recommendation of adding it to the PMR, but maintaining all of the setbacks that are currently.
Correct.
Okay, discussion on the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed say no?
No.
No?
It's a resolution.
Okay, calling the roll, Mr. Snowink?
No.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Harrison votes no, Henry?
Yes.
Zoller?
No.
And Robertson?
Yes.
Okay, so for lack of a majority, that, uh, fails. For points of discussion, and, uh, instead of moving forward, sometimes we move back, uh, I'm either going to table so we can, well, I'm just gonna move it back to the planning commission. I'll make a motion that we return this to the planning commission with a consideration of a two hundred-foot setback, uh, consistent with our neighboring communities, uh, and a request that the, uh, the applicant voluntarily provide any site plan and grading information that they feel may be helpful, for consideration by the planning commission, uh, so that would be.
I'll support that.
That would be my motion, we typically don't allow you to enter the debate, uh, unless it's a procedural.
It's just a clarification, you, two hundred-foot setback from the property line is.
From the property line.
That, that's beyond what your ordinance allows, right? I mean, that's more restrictive than the ordinance, you can't require that. I guess that's my position.
No, because.
I thought it was two hundred plus fifty to the home, so you were just picking a two hundred and fifty-foot setback from an adjacent home, which I, I understand your concerns about property, but.
Right, in other words, where I was going with it, Dan, is that, uh, to be consistent with our neighbors, let's say, their, their setback for mining is two hundred feet from the property line. And then in our, you know, our zoning district, then an additional fifty feet would be within our ordinance for the required setback, not for, for the mining, but for the setback from the home.
Correct.
So in practical matter, that's a two hundred and fifty-foot setback from, from the mining to the house, but the mining part is two hundred and the zoning part is fifty, that's what I'm saying.
Hundred, okay, if there were no houses, they could mine up to a hundred feet.
Correct.
If there was no setback from dwellings, which we are losing our enthusiasm for, uh, we would have from a property line, but I doubt it would be, well, maybe it would be a hundred feet, but there are houses, and so we would probably come up with a one-size-fits-all property line.
With, or with the zone.
Consistent with what our neighbors do, whether there's a house or not. So, the point being raised is that what I'm asking to be considered is more restrictive than the ordinance, if there weren't any houses, I could say two fifty from homes, but then we're back to an undating, work area.
So just for me to capture, moving back to the planning commission to discuss two hundred-foot setback. From the property line.
But I think the valid point of order process question would be, or I guess just recognition that that's greater than what the ordinance, uh, calls for.
How about two hundred feet from dwelling?
In the absence, pardon?
Two hundred feet from dwelling.
That's a hundred and fifty. From the property line.
Change the ordinance.
It's what we should do.
amend the ordinance.
Which has to go back to the planning commission, won't you?
Let's count women there, right?
Well, I'll, I'll still do my motion, because I think as a result of, uh, creating a, a compromise to the, uh, five hundred foot, it turns into two hundred and fifty feet, uh, so recognizing the, the flaws, uh, apparent in it, I would make that recommendation, if the planning commission could send it back to us, or the applicant could say, no, thank you, and withdraw, but that would be my request, I'll repeat it for the benefit of the clerk, that we send this to the planning commission with a recommendation that they consider a two hundred-foot property line setback, uh, for the mining area, and that they allow the applicant, applicant to, uh, submit grading and site plan information voluntarily, to be considered as part of this two hundred-foot request.
Thank you.
Is there support for that motion?
There, well, there was.
Okay, just stating it, so make sure he's still supported. I'll call that question, Mr. Snowink?
Aye.
Mr. Bradshaw?
No.
Harrison votes yes, Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Zoller?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion has passed, and it will go to the planning commission for their consideration with those current, uh, questions. Thank you, everyone, for those who are gathered, you're not required to stay, uh, till the end of the meeting, unless you have more you'd like to say to us, there is another pub- public comment period, and we're certainly available for conversation after the meeting, oh, well, some of us may be, so, if you have further thoughts, uh, so, we'll leave it at that. Board members moving along with our agenda. Item ten B is a motion to approve prepayment of Listening Valley number two drain in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Manager Nugent, please.
Yeah, so there's, um, in addition to the Emmons Lake Drain Project, there is this project, and then there's one other one up at the, um, South Belt Facility. This project is for a residential, uh, neighborhood, the same, um, at-large portion, um, is the responsibility of the township. The total cost of the project is estimated to be ninety-one thousand, with the township share being eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. The township can either choose to pay it all upfront, or pay it over a six-year special assessment at seven percent. So, the recommendation is to consider whether the township wants to pay it in one lump sum or over six years.
Okay, that is an introduction, any thoughts, and especially from Mr. Robertson, I know we paid the bigger one, similar.
It's eighteen thousand, well, we've spent seven hundred and fifty so far.
So just keep, keep spending, all right, I'd make a motion that we approve the prepayment of Listening Valley number two for eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Support.
Moved by Harrison, supported by Snowink, discussion. I'll call the roll, just 'cause I don't.
Yeah, me too.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
That's a no, by Mr. Zoller. Uh, item ten C is a motion to approve six installations of pressure-reducing valves at Portview Flats in Davenport's Panther Ridge, at a total cost of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, again, manager Nugent.
Absolutely, so, this was on the agenda for last, um, the last meeting, the first meeting in, uh, September. It was the request of a few board members to send that back to our legal team to see what our liability is and what our obligations are. The attorney responded that we don't need to install these, um, pressure-reducing valves, but we would very likely not be held liable if something were to occur, um, with these. However, the engineer maintains that we should be, uh, um, putting these pressure-reducing valves in and covering it for the cost, um, through the cost of the water, um, because the, the source change of the water will exceed the pressure by, um, above eighty PSI, um, the cost is thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, that includes materials and labor. Todd believes this is a sole-source bid, because when they went out, these, um, the pressure-reducing valves are within the units, so it would cost more to go out and get these quotes than it would just to have this, um, this contractor go and put the pressure-reducing valves in. So the township needs to consider and decide whether they want to pay to put in the pressure-reducing valves, or, or not to.
So. One moment, uh, with that as an introduction, well, go ahead.
Well, you said it.
Well, I was gonna ask Bradshaw first, but what, what do you wanna say?
I, I'm gonna say, I can't get a s- a hundred percent answer, except maybe the pressure's too high. Well, you know, I know a lot of places in Grand Rapids that are running eighty to ninety, and they don't have pressure-reducing valves, 'cause their, their pressures fluctuate, and I'm gonna be a no on this, 'cause I don't think the township should be paying private people for, uh, if we have change in water service.
I d- I do wanna add that, um, all development north of Sixtieth Street that occurs after the, um, after the pump station will be required to put the pressure-reducing valves in. It's just the ones before that are already existing did not put them in because they didn't have the same level of pressure. But again, like you said, it's not requirement of the township to put these in.
And north of Sixtieth is Cascade Township, so.
I'm sorry, um, north of the pu- pump station.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Bradshaw?
Didn't we have this happen with fire? That, that somehow there was something didn't work right, pressure jumped in people's.
That's possibly the case, and we probably shouldn't say something happened.
But I'm just saying, you said, you know, it can happen, right?
It's possible.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, water hammers occur naturally all the time in municipal water systems.
Yes, yes, they do.
All right, Mr. Bradshaw, your thoughts on this particular case?
So I appreciate the added confidence from our attorney, I, I mean, it really is just relying on governmental immunity, which, yeah, it's better than nothing, um, I, I'm ninety-five percent sure we're not gonna have an issue with any of these PRVs, but I'm just uncomfortable, um, similar to trustee Zoller, using public funds in a private residence. In similar instances that were different, not exactly the same, where this occurred at a previous government employer, we arranged an agreement with each individual property owner, and let them hire their own contractor and manage the work, and provided them the funds to do it, so that they were in charge of it, the liability remained with that private property owner, and we funded it, and that was it, the agreement said, if it ever breaks, it's on you, um, and that's what I would be most comfortable with. If there's, I do think there's a sense of urgency to get this done, so if it's not worth the time for these few places, I get that. I'm still a little bit uncomfortable, page one of the KNS plumbing proposal that costs eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars explicitly states that wall floor and ceiling repairs, and that drywall repairs likely needed in sixty-thirty, who's gonna do that? Again, that goes to, what are we doing inside these private properties, and who's gonna fix them, and that's what continues to make me uncomfortable.
And thanks for explaining that, I just didn't see why we should be paying for it, and.
He's not suggesting we don't pay for it, he's suggesting that they install and own it, and that we reimburse them of the cost, and then they are responsible for the quality of the work, and so.
Yeah, they pick their contractor, they, they have all the rights to make those choices.
Why, why should we, I'm, I'm a water supervisor, none of you guys are, why should I be subsidizing when, if I, you know, that's not too high a pressure, your, your, your plumbing should be able to handle eighty to ninety PSI, uh, and you're gonna have hammers, and you should have hammer resters, but you also have pressure reduced, I understand this, um, and if they would have built the code, if the plumbing, these buildings would have been built to code, my understanding is they would have them. But we didn't, they, if they would have filed state code, they would have those, and, and that's where, you know, like I said, I, I don't wanna waste ratepayers' money for something that we shouldn't, in my opinion.
Could we?
There's the liability and the, the fact that.
Yep.
I shouldn't have to subsidize something later, you know.
Can we send them notice of the change of supplier, that, that it's, there is a potential under current and our, uh, anticipated supplier of, of fluctuating pressures, and that they may just want to consider such change? And we're not paying, we're ma- putting them on notice that this is a protective measure, and that will be required, and that we believe it's of subs- some substantial consideration that we're adding it to a requirement for future developments, and just leave it at that, that says, you know, it's like smoke detectors, we think you should have them, we're making other people put them in.
We're not paying for it.
But we're not paying for it, is that a solution? 'Cause I appreciate governmental immunity too, but we should design things and require things that avoid bad things, uh, so at least this, I'd put that out there, is that not a good solution, uh, should we re-? I would support that. So, I don't think we need any, well, I'd make a motion that we send notice to the, uh, noted property owners of our anticipated change in water suppliers, noting the potential.
Increase in pressure.
Increase in, or fluctuate, increase in fluctuations, pressures as being on a water system, and that our new requirements will require these PRVs, and, uh, that they may wish to consider, uh, installing one on their property.
Support.
Moved by Harrison, supported by Snowink, discussion on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no?
No.
Okay. Item ten D is a motion to approve the sewer contract for Smoking Joe's and for the PRV installations at a cost of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, fifty cents with a ten percent contingency. Manager Nugent?
Absolutely, so, um, it is my understanding that, um, Smoking Joe agreed to pay for the sanitary sewer when it was to come through. Since then, the property, um, has kind of transferred over to Komodo. Komodo, um, is in agreement that they will pay for it, but they've requested that it's split between four properties. This, um, is part of our MDOT project, half of it will be done by the township, the other half will be done by MDOT. The first portion of the project was bid out on, um, previously, and the lowest best bid was a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. Um, the cost will be split between the four property owners, and they, it will be paid back upon connection to the system. And so, they, the property owners will not be able to connect until both portions are complete, both MDOT and the township portion, and that total cost will be split between the four property owners to be paid once they connect to the system.
Are they required to connect?
I don't know that they're required to connect.
One parcel's vacant, so if they were to build on that, do, don't we have some sort of guarantee that they'd have to hook up? And if we don't, then we need to table this.
I don't know if they need it, if they, if they're required to hook onto it.
Make a motion to table.
Does not require support, a motion table's been made, any thoughts on that? All in favor of tabling, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say no?
No.
We'll bring it back with clarification on the questions that's been raised. Is there, is there a time sensitivity, Allison, that, uh?
Um, likely, because it was bid out, um, but I can talk to Todd, he's had, let him know of the questions tomorrow, and he'll answer them.
All right, thank you. All right, item eleven is public comment, anyone wishing to make public comment? Yes, sir.
A light one tonight, huh?
For us, yeah, not for some communities.
July twenty-first, well, I wa- I've been walking the trail for many years. Saw a gentleman, he used to do a, um, garden back there behind the, the, um, library. It was a nice garden, I'm sure he wasn't supposed to do that, that's why I was told not to do it. And now he doesn't do it, but it looked nice, it was, uh, didn't smell. He was providing food for his family. But, again, it was outside of regulations, so he was told not to do it. So, you walk the trail, it looks nice, you know, most of the trail looks nice, there's some trees down, 'cause, you know, it was some storms lately, or, you know, last few years, and that happens, you know, it's just part of, part of nature. And then, as I'm walking around, I see, you know, someone dumping, they dump branches all the time, whatever, a couple branches here and there, you know, I get that, they're just gonna throw them there. But then the guy's, you know, he's dumping all his grass clippings. So I come here July twenty-first, make mention of that, able to look into it, we don't know who's doing it, I say, no, I tell you when he's, you know, cutting the grass. Nothing happens. Or at least not visibly, nothing happens. I came, it was either August sixth or twentieth, I can't remember what meeting I came to, but I had come to the board again. And I heard come to the meeting here, hey, you're gonna have a meeting tonight, oh, I'll come to the board and let them know. So I was assured there're gonna be signs, there're gonna be some, you know, due diligence to be taken care of. Weeks go by, nothing happens, uh, stuff's still being dumped, no one's talked to the people that were there, a letter was sent out. Um, according to you guys, and I assume you did, you wouldn't lie about that, I see, I see no reason why you would, there's no reason for that, so I assume a letter went out. Then I come back to the last board meeting, 'cause I still see all the stuff still sitting there. And no signs. Between July, or September third and now, there are signs there, uh, six or seven signs there, or whatever, I don't know how many there are there. And then, um, but now, when's it gonna get cleaned up? You know, I talked to the village, it's free stuff, this guy just, all we had to do is put it in there. So my question is, who's gonna do it? When are we gonna do it? Wh- when's it gonna get done? I know it's not a big monumental thing, it's not like earth-shattering, like, uh, that development there, that seems like a pretty cool thing. Uh, I know that people don't want it around their house, and there's some, you know, things that he has to deal with, and I get that, that's a bigger, much bigger issue. But it seems like i- i- we can get this done. You know, get some, get some bags to some employees, take care of it, pay me to do it, I'll do it for you. You know, i- i- I don't care, I, I just wanna get it out of there. I'm not this big, uh, tree hugger thing, but, I mean, that's great that people do that, it just smells when you go back there, go back after it rains, it smells, you could, you don't even have to see it, it smells.
I was out there.
Oh, good, oh, hey, great, great.
I was out there.
He cut it on Saturday, so, by the way.
Well, there was no new grass.
No, no, not, not the last week.
No new grass.
Not the last week.
Our maintenance slash cleanup guy did clean up, there's a few little remnants of, of, uh, trimmings, uh, plants, and maybe a teeny little bit of grass that's gonna degrade by next spring, it'll be all dirt. Do you want him to rake all the way down to bare dirt? That's not reasonable. What I saw is everything's decent over there, there's no new stuff, I've been there three times since, so I did address it. And I think I met your dad who's next door, to the dad that's.
My dad's in heaven, so I don't know, you can meet him, so, so you may have met him, so, how's he doing?
There's another Thomas next door, with the last name Thomas.
Oh, I just wonder how he's doing.
So, but, I just said, I'm just saying, everything seemed to be okay, so.
Do you wanna see a video I took two days ago, all the grass that's there?
Coming here and saying we're doing nothing, we did.
Okay, I, I asked, when's it gonna get cleaned up? I didn't say you did nothing, you sent a letter, you sent a letter, and you put signs up, I didn't say you did nothing.
That's it.
Okay.
Out of line.
No, I can yell, you're allowed, it's free, uh, yes, you can, it's a, you're allowed to yell, I've got the notice from my Kent County Sheriff, I can yell, I didn't swear at you, yes, I can yell. Yes, I can, thank you very much, First Amendment, uh, if you know what that means, um, I can do that. Yeah, wow, because it hasn't been cleaned up, when's it getting cleaned up? You want me to go do it, you wanna pay me to do it? It's not cleaned up, there's a ton of stuff there.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, he took him, he took about thirty-five seconds, I don't get thirty more seconds?
You can. Go for it.
I don't wanna prolong the conversation, but I, when I walked by there myself, it's an interesting jurisdictional situation, because it's our property, but we're in the village.
The village.
We're in the village, so enforcement would be, more or less, we would be like a private property owner, having to complain to the village saying somebody, some resident is dumping clippings on my property, but if we're not as offended by that as this gentleman here, then that's up to us, I guess. You know, the words, you know, I don't, this gentleman walks the trail, you know, I'm on that trail at least every week, sometimes several times a week. And, you know, in terms of what's down, and if it's just grass clippings, I'm not that concerned, but there's just a lot of downed trees, we have, you know, people up by the water tower complaining about trees that fall down and so forth, but it, you know, it's, 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 the complaint really we would make is that we would go to the village and say, people are dumping on my property, it's not, really, that's not the township's jurisdictional area.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes, uh, board comment. I mean, that concludes public comment, board comment, Mr. Snowink?
I'm good.
Mr. Bradshaw?
We had a planning commission meeting Monday this week, and approved the expansion of the golf cart site at M thirty-seven in Main Street. I actually with the lone no vote, because of concern, our master plan, um, was to extend Main Street to the east, and this development will maybe not make that impossible, it'll make it much more difficult to do that in the future, so, um, there was a lot of discussion on what that all meant. And then, last week, I had the privilege to be on vacation in Scotland, and it was fun to learn about the Caledonians that ruled in two hundred A.D. and fought the Romans, and, um, some of the history of why we're the Fighting Scots, and I won't bug you anymore to change our logo from the thistle either, 'cause I learned a lot more history about why.
All right. Um, the park and trail vision process continues, we've had some stakeholder meetings, there is a, uh, open house tomorrow. And we will be at the Harvest Festival as well, uh, postcard mailing, there's an online survey, so just a lot of good, uh, information happening there. We did have a follow-up meeting, regarding parking in general and trailhead, uh, issues with the village, uh, just so those conversations are taking place, but of course, all that's kind of on hold. I think the domino of decisions, and for us to, to consider the issue of the trailhead parking there on, uh, Main Street, uh, the first thing that has to happen for anyone to, uh, pose, force the question is the DNR grants, we're just kind of waiting to see where that might occur. As to the grass clippings, um, it was my intention to leave them there and to put up a sign, and so I wanted to show, I walked by and one of them said, you know, you can tell where people have put brush, you can tell where they have put grass clippings, and you can certainly see where someone's dog has done their business, and they left it there. And yes, you can see fallen trees and things like that, which nature, you know, has unmanicured our, you know, experience out there. I wanted the mound to stay there, so we could put a sign and almost shame on you, here's a bad example of bad behavior, um, so I didn't mind that it was there. I do think it's interesting that, uh, the village, you know, takes lots and lots of grass clippings and spreads them on their own property, and so, uh, as a natural benefit of a way to dispose it. So I don't know that we're ignoring an environmental, uh, risk, I think that's a stretch, I, I do think, uh, the idea that, uh, people are doing along the trail is a shame. It i- it is littering, uh, of sorts, 'cause it's not their property, so it's a trespass, and, and so on. But its level of seriousness on one to ten to me is a three, I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna encourage it, but I don't see it as being urgent, or a s- sign of, you know, mismanagement on our part, in the sense that I asked to leave it there, at least long enough for us to put a sign up and shame the people, so that they could say, we know what you're doing, and other people could say, yeah, that's pretty poor, and then we did have our person move it, uh, maybe not to the standards of, of some, but to good enough, uh, and sometimes good enough is good enough, and so, uh, yeah, in public comment, you're allowed to yell, uh, so.
Even moon.
Yeah, so.
I seen that, where they gotta judge as okay, and it's an expression of what they think, so.
We are doing our job.
I wasn't gonna say that, Adam, uh, clerk.
I have no comment.
Mr. Zoller?
Our, our people have been doing our job, and that's what kind of got, got me, and this individual come up and tell us not what we are or aren't doing. I know it was cleaned up, was it down to bare dirt? No, it does degrade. You know, and, uh, if we were gonna enforce one, well, there's probably twenty along there, or pretty close, that are putting something in our, on our property. So now, do, you wanna go up, you don't like the grass clippings, but you don't care about the downed branches that people throw at the end of the property?
And, and we.
Where, where do you find a happy medium, you know, so?
Same with the village gardener.
Yeah.
We had people on both sides of it, so it's part of our managing, uh, having nice things.
I think enough's enough, and I don't wanna hear about it.
Mr. Robertson?
I'm done, I'm sorry.
Move your turn.
Support. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.